Family Father, thank you for the opportunity that we have here in the United States to have a free government. Thank you for your guidance and we pray that you'll be with us tonight as decisions are made. We pray for safety on the roads for those that are out and about. We pray that you will give us wisdom and be with us when we leave tonight that we'll be safely home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Well, I believe this is our full attendance because Bob did let us know that he wouldn't be here tonight. So at the stroke of seven.
Do you want to say his name three times?
Well, I can try. I told him I wouldn't do it, but I could do it.
Oh.
Bob Porter. Bob Porter. Bob Porter. Well, it didn't work. All right. So here we are at one minute before seven, calling the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone, and I'll ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for venturing out in this weather. And Devin, would you take the roll call, please?
Mike McConnell.
Here.
Mindy Gallovi.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter. Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Suhaman.
Here.
Al's County Board, Sub-Council Member, Bob Porter.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as per.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Larry, to approve the minutes. I'm sorry, approve the agenda. I'm reading and speaking and I can't do that at the same time. So all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now looking for reading and approval of the last meeting, the January 20th meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from January 20th, 2022, regular meeting.
Mike has moved and Mindy seconded to waive the rules and suspend the rules, waive the reading, approve the minutes from January 20th, 2022, regular meeting. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight? I don't think we do. I think everything's on the agenda, so we'll move on. Any public comment from anyone? You can step up to the podium and you have three, well, five minutes, I guess we changed that, if you have any comment you'd like to make. No? Okay, then. Moving on to communications, I'll ask Devin to present any of those.
I'm going to bring up three subjects real quick. One of them, when we were going over the website, there was a subject that was mentioned that we'd like to see on the calendar. Basically, my interpretation was if we had city representatives, those meetings shouldn't be included into our calendar, and I have looked into that to consider so that if people want to participate and see what the city's involved, that they could participate in those meetings. That would include the District Library, Shaiwasi Council on Aging, as we call it, SCOA, I-69 Trade Corridor, SADA, and CISA. Also, I wanted to note that through elections, emails that I get, I receive some information regarding charters and charter amendments, and I just want to make sure that council have received the copy that I gave them. It was very interesting and that the Attorney General and Governor have set guidelines now that they will not approve charter amendments if they're not received at least 60 days prior, an extensive amendment 90 days prior, to submit for a ballot. So I thought that was good information that you would like to read upon. And then lastly, I have a full disclosure that is done annually. We have an employee that has a private business that helps out the city, and so it goes. Shirley Smith, full-time accountant, payable, cash-receiving clerk. This is dated February 22nd, 2022. I am disclosing that I have partners with my husband Travis Smith concerning the business of Smith Sand and Gravel Incorporated. Smith Sand and Gravel has been requested to work and sell products occasionally to the city of Perry for many years. All matters with the city take place with my husband Travis Smith and the Department of Public Works. All invoices from Smith Sand and Gravel are reviewed and approved by the Superintendent of Public Works. The following services have been provided by request of the Superintendent of Public Works to the city on an as-needed basis: aggregated materials, snow removal, asphalt patching, paving of city streets, demolition. Thank you for your time. Signed, Shirley Smith. And again, according to our ordinances and charter, this must be done once a year. And that's all I have.
Did you want to say anything about this?
I was.
Or you may have.
Okay, then.
Okay, then. Then we are moving on to mayor and department head reports. Megan, would you like to go first?
Hello. I'll start with the piece of paper you just held up, Sue. That was just a notice I put in the council members' packets to let you know that the USDA did highlight the city of Perry in their January newsletter, and that was about the tractor grant that we received. So it was just kind of, there was a couple other cities in there as well, but just highlighting the many benefits that the USDA grant program has for communities across Michigan. The only other thing I have for this evening is in the new business section. Do you want me to continue with that now?
No, we'll wait until this.
Okay.
We'll wait until the new business.
That's all I have.
John? Do you have anything?
Excuse me. Nothing of any major, just I would like the residents to know that Public Works does not plow all the snow into people's driveways deliberately. My only request is, is not to put it back out in the street after we come through, pile it in the corners of your, end of your driveway. If you put it on the opposite side of where the plow direction is, there's a short video on the DPW's webpage, and that may help alleviate, but with the magnitude of snow, it's not deliberate or personal doing that.
I'd like to mention, my road is plowed by the cumin, and they found my driveway too. It can't be helped.
And this is just a kind of a recap of last year. We have a lot of things going in this town. There was, I counted up, I think there was almost 400 missed dig locates that we did in 2021. So various things, anybody that digs, homeowners, contractors, consumers, us. So that's pretty much.
Well, I think you've done a great job on the roads.
Yes.
The plow, you and your crew. I know that was a lot of work.
We're kind of short, but we're getting by. Okay.
You did it.
Devin, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. I just would like to say that now that we have snow, we'll have the snow sculpture contest because we tried to have it for January, ended it on Monday, and then it snowed. So we'll have the snow sculpture contest for the next two weeks, so if you're interested in participating in that, please stop into City Hall, and Shirley will get your information, and we'll judge your snow sculpture. And then I did want to say too, that I have had two emergency responders come in this week to tell me that they see very positive changes taking place in the fire department and ambulance, and so I just wanted to pass that word along. And I think that's everything I have. Do we have any committee reports for tonight?
I'll just mention that the Finance and Ordinance Committee is continuing their work on the draft for the medical marijuana ordinance, and our next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, February 9th at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers.
Thank you, Larry. Any other committees? I think the other committees are going to be under new business, so we'll move to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. In old business, we do have an appointment, and that is for our representative to the library board. Mike Tobias was the library board representative for a lot of years, and we have extended appreciation to him, but he moved outside of the city limits, and even though our ordinance and charter will allow him to continue to serve on the library board, the library board's laws don't allow that to happen. So I have talked with Maria Cuthbert, who is a very frequent user of the library. She was recommended by the local librarian, Carol. Maria lives at 315 West Robb Street, and she would welcome the opportunity to serve on the library board, so I would like council's approval to appoint her there.
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Maria Cuthbert to the District Library Board for the term expiring December 2022.
Second.
It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mike to approve that appointment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Moving into new business. Megan, you're back up.
In your packets, you should have a copy of the budget, along with a one-page note of so many key items I'd like to point out. In the budget, I've included both the original budget, the amended budget, and activity through December 31st. For the general fund, revenues are on trend with prior years and as expected for the end of second quarter. Site plan reviews are up this year, and that's a result of new commercial properties in the areas such as Big B and Matumbo Foods. Expenses are in line with budget. I do expect future budget amendments will be needed to account for payroll expenses, and that's just due to a lot of changes in staffing from when this budget was created. Highway major and local funds, state shared revenues are as expected for the end of second quarter, and expenses are on trend for prior years. In the budget, though, we do show that we were expecting grant funds in both highway major and highway local, and while the city did apply for TED FB grants, funds were not awarded, so expenses will also be reduced knowing that we have not received those funds through the grants for the revenue. In the sewer fund, everything looks as it should for the end of second quarter. Connection and tap revenue has already exceeded budget, and expenses are in line with budget. As for the water fund, everything expected again as it should be for second quarter. However, one thing to note is that we budgeted $205,000 in state grant revenue. That was probably a placeholder for ARPA funds. As you know, we have received $109,000 to date. We won't receive any more in this budget year. The rest will come in in the next budget cycle for the '22, '23. So I do not have any proposed budget amendments at this time for second quarter.
Council, anyone have questions for Megan or comments regarding this report? Good job, Megan.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need a motion on that, so we can accept that report?
I don't know. I guess we do. Looking for a motion to approve that report. Steve, you want to do that?
I will. I'll move that we approve the second quarter budget comparison as presented by the city treasurer.
Second. I already have Mindy's name down. It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Mindy. Approve the second quarter budget comparison as presented by the city treasurer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we have possible approval of a desk chair, and if I remember right, this is a police department item, and Devin is going to tell us about that.
Yes, so this invoice was a delay due to there's a third party participating with DBI to produce these, so I apologize, you got it tonight in your packet. So for probably, it's been discussed the last three to four years, the police department wanting to replace one, if not two, of their chairs with in the staff of their office. And at this time, the budget can allow that under office capital supplies. We were able to get another demo through DBI, and when I had been pricing these out for the police department in the past, on the low end, they were running $500 to $800. So I do believe this is a very good price, and so they're replacing both of the police department's chairs. These are on the higher end and are a little bit more, as you see, again, they call these the ergo-g chairs. Due to their equipment and everything, the police officers actually have to have a different type of chair to accommodate for them sitting in a desk comfortably and all the equipment. So it is a pricier chair, and I think that was one of the things that Kyle was like, we don't have to get them this year, we don't have to get them this year. But they're really showing wear and tear, and so I ask that you consider approving them tonight.
Any discussion on that, council?
I move that we accept the proposal. Oh, excuse me. I move that we approve the purchase of two new Ergogenesis chairs from DBI Business Interiors at a total cost not to exceed $1,203.60.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of these chairs. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Kyle did tell me that if they try to sit in a regular chair with all the equipment that they have on, when they stand up, the chair comes with them. So we don't want that.
No. I was going to ask that question to Devin, point that that makes a lot of sense.
Moving on then to our next agenda item is possible approval for lagoon chamber valve replacement. John?
So out in, this holds back the water. The valve is, we've had some issues with it. We've managed to get it closed. We're running the pond down. We're going to do three runoffs this spring and get it below that valve chamber, or so that we can replace it. At least that's the plan. I just don't want to get into a situation where I can't shut this thing down and have millions of gallons of liquid pushing to get into the other two ponds. So I think that one was done, it's probably 30 years old or something that's in there. So some work needs to be done, repositioning the angle of the rod that is on the surface so it's not such a steep angle, and THI-FR. Does, we contract with them to do most of our sewer preventative maintenance stuff annually, and I work with them on things like this. It's a bigger job than what we can handle. We'll be there in support of it, but procurement of the valve and whatnot, and so.
You had a lot this amount in the budget for that, John?
I do, and I think capital replacement, some of that money was going to do the sewer relining, which is probably looking like March-April timeframe when that's going to be done, and then this here should, it'll be within a couple hundred dollars that I budgeted for, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I move that we accept the proposal from THI-FR for the amount not to exceed $14,520 to repair lagoon chamber valve and authorize Superintendent BPW to sign proposal.
Second.
We have a motion made by Larry and seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on our agenda is the possible adoption of a resolution for an EDA grant application. I think all of you got information concerning this EDA grant. It is related to a proposed water extension that would go out into Perry Township, go down Lansing Road to Bennett Drive, and come back around and connect to the existing line on Britton Road. But it also includes a second water tower for the city and development of a second well site that the city is purchasing the land for right now on a land contract that's out on Ellsworth Road. The total cost of the project is higher than it was when this grant application was approved before, and it was approved when Mayor Pubulet was the mayor in November of 2020 for the grant application, and the then council, sitting council, did approve a resolution stating that we had funds of $127,500 unencumbered and available for that project. They did then apply for that grant, and by, well, they actually were going to submit their application for the grant, but they were notified that the grant was out of money. So they were told, though, to still go ahead and make application so that it would be on file, so they did do that. But then we found out that the supplementing money to help cover the 20%, because this was a 80-20 grant, was no longer available from the state. So we've felt that this was not going to move ahead, at least based on the information that we had at that time. Then Justin Horvath from the SEDP contacted us, the city and Perry Township, and said, it lives, it lives, we've got money again. So they have a 80-20 grant available through the EDC with now a surprising promise to cover whatever portion we need to cover what the city has obligated themselves for at $127,500, and the difference to achieve our 20% and do the same for the township. The townships committed $330,000 for their portion of this. So they did, they being Mark Faux, who arranged for the engineer to do the cost estimate back when they first started this in 2020. He got hold of that engineer and had them redo the cost so that we have an up-to-date cost. Last time this was applied for, it was five and a half million, more or less. Now it's $7,188,000. The good news is, that doesn't change the city's obligation. We would still be committing $127,500 to this project, and the township, the amount that they had committed before. And the SEDP is completing the grant paperwork for us for both the 80% and the 20%, and has been assisting with this all along. Justin Horvath had thought he might be able to be here tonight in case anybody had questions, but with the weather and the out-of-town meeting, he's not able to get back in time. So Larry Lambert has gone to several of these meetings with me and John Souter, and so if anybody has any questions about all this, we'll do our best to answer them. Because we're looking for tonight a resolution that supports the grant being applied for and stating that the city has $127,500 unencumbered and available for this project. But questions, what discussion?
Just a comment, that's $127,000, which would be the city's portion against an over $7 million project, so.
Yeah, that went up.
I mean, it's a very, if we elect to support it, to resupport it, it's a very small investment for the city for a much improved overall water system, what happened tomorrow, but it's certainly, I think, a good thing if it ever, if it does come to pass.
The grant applications have to be submitted by March, and, or in March. I think the response would be then, was it June?
You bought that time very much.
I think it's June. So obviously, without any knowledge of approval until June, it would certainly be spring of 2023 before there would be action. I'm sure that the bid process would start, correct, John? If we do get approval for the grant, then bids go out, we have to get three bids?
Well, I don't know if we could do preliminary bids on, because everyone's going to know what is entailed in the overall plan. This is, this doesn't have the nitty-gritty details from the other stuff, and I didn't bring everything. I know pretty much, you know, the city's portion is going to be one new well. We have capacity for two new wells on the property that we bought. It would be pumped over to the new, what are, the iron removal plant. Two more vessels would be added for capacity there, and then that would be, that's where the $127,000 is out of the, it used to be 800, and almost 900,000.
Right.
I'm sure that those things have went up, you know, the engineering fees, whatever they, but the material costs are what is killing all these projects with cost. So then it would, and then the looping out there, and then the tower. You know, from what I understand of, you know, I'm in support of it because the cost is, but I have, everyone knows that I've told the whole picture of what it looks like to me. I'm not, you know, so what would happen, from my understanding, is we have to be the ones to be the lead on the grant. The township can't. You have to be a water municipality, so they're kind of co-signers type of thing.
They're supportive.
I can't remember, yeah.
Yeah.
So then that system in the township would end up becoming ours. I don't know the full agreement that's going to come in the end, but.
When they were working on this before, they did have several meetings, and I think I sent everybody those papers that talked about proposed agreements for maintenance and how that would all be looked at. There hasn't been. There hasn't been anything, though, that was finalized or signed. So those negotiations would continue and be finalized.
So the tower size, they initially wanted a half a million gallon tower. The reason it went down to 200 is because of me. We pump on an average monthly, or excuse me, daily about 160,000 gallons currently. I couldn't figure out what I was going to do with 700,000 gallons of water. And it would age out. So their solution, if that was the case, is to shut everything down and then pump it back out and rechlorinate it as it comes back out. And it was going to be a nightmare for me to manage. And so that's the reason that it's a smaller tower.
But it's still adequate for the purpose and for the area?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, unless you get a user in that's using, you know, 100,000 gallons a day, but I don't necessarily see that. I mean, it could happen, but then they might have to pull me up and do something else.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
So that's the scope of it, you know. But I've told in the meetings, and everyone knows the other things that, inside the city limits, that we have as far as asset management and replacement.
Obviously, the township is interested in doing this because it will allow them to have, under pressure, water running out to their business area, to their commercial area and light industrial area. The businesses that are existing out in that area now have their own wells. And if they can access city water under pressure, they can install sprinkler systems. And first of all, it'll be safer, but second of all, reduce their insurance costs by tremendously. And then other businesses have looked at coming into that area, but have not done that because of the lack of pressurized water. So it does bring businesses into Perry Township, but hopefully that brings jobs to people who live in the city. It does benefit the city, like Larry said, by a small amount of money compared to the huge cost of the project by providing that second tower and our second well site.
If we get some more businesses out there, is the 200,000 gallon tank going to be able to accommodate that, you think?
Well, you know, looking at Bennett Drive currently, and I don't know how many other parcels are available in the township. I know there's a chunk of land, say 24 acres and whatever it's on. You know, I believe that it's going to be adequate to carry us for a while. You know, some other towns I know, you know, we have a 200,000 gallon tower now. We're at an average of 160. Eagle has said stuff to me that we're going to have to look at extra capacity of storage. You know, are there going to be any implications or any things that come from this? Because the, we're going to be pumping water from our wells to the farthest extreme that we can, to a tower. So are booster pumps ever going to be needed? There's a potential there. I believe HRC would have looked at the elevations and whatnot. That's kind of, I mean, I know the concepts of it, but that's not my wheelhouse. So at this time, I don't believe that there is any issues like that. So, but yeah, I believe it'll take us in, you know, if things really boom, you know, that project in Durand, I asked about that because that could change the whole dynamics of everything. If that was to come to fruition. But I don't know if anybody knows. I don't know. That was what Justin said his meeting was about tonight down in Marshall.
Any other questions?
So if somebody came in that wanted an extravagant amount of water, would we have control?
Yeah.
If it's a township property, would we have any control over?
Well, there's probably going to have to be some limits on capacity because I can only, we can only supply so much. Even if we do go into another well, you know, like, right now, we have like, I think they call it a firm capacity. We could run for six months with all the wells running before we pump them dry. I don't want to, you know, the aquifers go up and down as each one cycles, you know. But that was, you don't want to run at that rate. You know, our wells run about 350 gallons a minute right now. There's probably, the new one probably would be a little bit bigger than that, but not much, maybe 500. And you don't want to be pumping 500 gallons a minute all day long in a town like our size, you know.
I think maybe to help answer Mindy's question, though, yes, we do have some say regarding that, or we will. Because in the agreements and in all the agreements that we'll have with Perry Township, there'll be stipulations as to the maximum usage. And certainly, if somebody exceeds that, they'll have to provide their own tower or their own, their own storage system to do that, or they won't be able to receive a permit because we just can't do that, you know. So yeah, that'll be spelled out in there, and we'll have time to negotiate this. Again, tonight, we're saying, yes, go ahead and apply for the grant. And yes, we'll commit to this much money. If then we don't get the grant, then we're in hold again and just, you know, in a holding pattern. If we do get the grant, though, then it's a process. I mean, we've got things, details to negotiate. We've got bids to get. And if at any point there's any indication that the city would have to pay more than we have committed, we wouldn't do it. It just wouldn't happen.
And there's a lot more engineering detail in this seven-plus million dollars. There's a billion dollars worth of additional engineering detail yet to be refined down to the nitty-gritty detail.
Yeah. And in that change from the 5 million to the 7 million, if you look at those and compare, some of the material costs obviously went much higher, but some of the labor costs and some of the engineering costs went down. So, you know, I think they're trying to work with people, recognizing the material costs are so high.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution presented, which states the city commits $127,500 towards the approved EPA, approved EDA grant.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike approved and seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on in the agenda then to possible approval of poverty exemption resolution. This is kind of a renewal of something that's been done before, which Devon has always been a part of. So I'll let her field any questions from you in regard to that.
Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution 2022 that is in front of you. State mandates that our assessor have the council approve this each year according to the state rules. And also, if you'll see in the resolution, it also gives the poverty dollar guidelines in it. Thankfully, we don't get very many of these, but we have to make sure that it is available to the community. And so for the assessor's sake, I ask that you, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them and consider approving it tonight.
I move that we accept and approve the resolution which presented, which states the 2022 guidelines for poverty exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to Personnel Committee Recommendations Regarding Job Positions. Mindy is our chair of the, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Back up. Add my checkmark too soon. Next thing on the agenda is the discussion to reorganize committees. And that is our standing committees that we have here at the city. Up to this point, we have had Finance and Ordnance, Parks and Properties, Public Works, Health and Safety, Business Affairs and Technology, Personnel and Labor Negotiations, Police Commission, Safety, Law Enforcement. So there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different standing committees, which meant that each of our six council members served on three. Is that right? Yeah, three committees. Some of those committees met monthly, some met weekly, if they had a specific project they were working on. And some of them have not met, to my knowledge, at least not since I've been mayor, for at least the last year, if not longer. So Bob Porter brought up at the last meeting that he felt at least the Parks and Properties Committee should be renamed because his committee dwells on parks and doesn't really have any connection or oversight regarding properties. So that got us starting about perhaps even changing the titles of other committees and rearranging those. So I believe you each have recommendations that were revisions by Devon and myself. And they would be, based on this recommendation, but certainly open to discussion, Ordnance Committee, Parks, Technology and Communications, Personnel and Labor Negotiations. Then a work group would be appointed if needed. If a subject came up that's not covered by one of these four standing committees, then a work group would be developed from the city council and assigned the task of looking at that. So what are your thoughts regarding those suggestions for committees, standing committees?
Simplifies it some.
I agree.
I like the idea of work groups when a specific project, you know, comes up and then, you know, it doesn't feel like one of the groups is stagnant.
Because I think the ones that aren't under the umbrella of the new committee structure are ones that haven't had occasion to meet before and may not have occasion. If they do, then there are work groups for a task.
Yeah. What do you think, Steve?
Good job. Yep, I agree.
Yes, Devon.
The other request was a definition. So I explained to the mayor that your work group does have a definition and is the definition of what my, I was taught of what a standing committee is. So as you can see, I gave you two sheets from the mayor's recommendation and gave you the original section from Council Rules and Procedures, and then in red, implemented. If you are looking for more definition than that, it's a conversation. But that was some logic to define that. And because I know I've had that discussion with Mr. Porter before, and I told him, you're not going to find a definition. So that's, that was, that's a recommendation or a discussion.
My heart cried crash, so I don't have.
You can find it. Okay. Well, thanks for trying.
Yeah.
So if that wasn't, if you're looking for more direction of what those committees do, then of course, that's just a starting point.
I move that, oops, you.
No, we didn't make a motion for that?
No.
The mayor thought it would be a discussion and you might want to change it, right?
Yes, that was my thought. But if you're good with that, do we need, do we need a motion? Does somebody want to make a motion? You make up your own motion? Or what do you think?
Council Rules and Procedure has to be a formal resolution to be amended, that part of it. But if you wanted to make a motion to approve her appointments, because she has changed them underneath the committees, you can do that.
Well, we, yes, we can certainly do that. The Ordnance Committee, my suggestion is, for Ordnance Committee is Larry Lambert, who has served as chair of that and would continue to do that. And then Mindy Galbavi, Steve Wallace, Parks, Bob Porter, Mike Connell, and whoever our new council member is. George Dunn also serves on that from the public. Under Technology and Communications, Larry Lambert, who again has served as chair of that committee and would continue to do so. Again, Mindy Galbavi and Steve Wallace. And then on the Personnel and Labor Negotiations, would be Mindy Galbavi as chair, which she has been chair of the Personnel Committee and would continue to do that, Mike Connell and whoever our new council member is. Larry has been filling in temporarily in that seat as we had ongoing things to do. So if you do want to approve those appointments, we could do that. And then we'll have to put this to next meeting for resolution. Anybody want to approve those?
Yes. Somebody asked us to say it.
Sure. I move that, I move that we reorganize the committees based on the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. So we'll put on the agenda for next meeting to have a resolution. Now moving on on the agenda is to Personnel Committee Recommendations Regarding Job Positions, and Mindy Galbavi is the chair of that committee. Mindy?
Do you care which one goes first?
No, I don't, I don't care. But if, do you want me to speak to the events first, or is that what you're going to do first? Because I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay. I did ask council to develop an events committee because we were having many events that were sponsored, coordinated, and organized by our events coordinator position. And so we started having those meetings last summer and had some interest from some business owners. Mindy also served on that committee. Dory Bortman, who was the events coordinator, served on that committee. And we had kind of a rotating few business owners who would join us at some of those meetings. Through that six, seven-month process, though, it became apparent that it really wasn't a group effort. It was a struggle to get people to engage and get excited about any events. And so my suggestion is, based on that, based on lack of interest, based on lack of participation from the residents, even though we may have had 300 people at National Night Out, for example, and at the Christmas Fantasy, we have 2,000 people who live in the city. So that's a small percentage. And I feel that it's not enough bang for our buck, so to speak. And my recommendation is to disband the events committee. So I made that recommendation to the Personnel Committee, and we and we've had many discussions about it. And I'll turn that over to Mindy.
Okay, so after lots of lengthy discussion, the Personnel Committee recommends the events committee disband for the reasons stated by mayor. Just fully agree that it's just not there. It's just not there.
So we're looking for a motion of approval for that? If anyone has any discussion regarding that beforehand, or?
I move that we disband the events committee per the recommendation of the Personnel Committee.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded from Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, any against the motion, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. As you can tell, this is an emotional thing for me. It's hard because we, we, the committee, Devon included in many of those meetings, we worked very hard to try to get things going between the city and the businesses. And it just, it wasn't happening. So it wasn't an easy decision to make, just to clarify that. Mindy, if you want to take back over regarding the other items we have.
Okay, so along those same lines, considering the lack of community participation at city-sponsored events, it is also recommended the events coordinator position be dissolved. We will continue to encourage city support for future activities presented by local organizations. We absolutely want to be involved and volunteer to help in any way that they might need. So, but we do feel the events coordinator position is to be dissolved.
Any discussion regarding that or questions for the Personnel Committee? Moving on then, Mindy, do you want to address the remainder of that?
We've done that report, ma'am. For the events, for the, for the events coordinator?
I thought there was more after that.
There is more, but not involving the events.
Okay.
So we now have our new website, and it is no longer requires full-time attention by staff. So we recommend the website maintenance position also be dissolved.
Any discussion regarding that?
I would point out that we did as a council contract back when we launched the development of the new website, that we would contract with Shoemakers to do the routine maintenance and updating as we needed changes to be made.
Yes, I should have said that. It's now managed by Shoemakers. So we don't need our personnel to put in as many hours on it as they used to have to.
Any questions on that?
And in addition to that, because of improved technology over the years, it has greatly reduced the amount of time necessary to perform the duties of the utility clerk. And we did extensive interviews with our department heads. And it is felt that these tasks can be reassigned so that utility clerk position is not needed any longer.
The only remaining task that would need to be reassigned would be the actual utility billing. And Department Head Devon, who oversees that, said that she felt that it could certainly be accomplished by the other two remaining positions in the City Hall office, which are the treasurer and then our cash receiving position, which is Joey Smith. So Personnel Committee's recommendation is to eliminate the utility clerk slash events coordinator position. And if we have any discussion regarding that, we can do that. If anybody is ready to make a motion, we're looking for a resolution regarding that.
I move that the Personnel Committee's recommendation, we eliminate the utility clerk events coordinator position, which includes the job responsibilities for maintaining the city website. Authorize the clerk to reassign job responsibilities accordingly. Authorize mayor Personnel Committee to seek legal counsel for proper course of action and determine severance terms and shall be effective March 7, 2022.
Second.
There we go again.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Mindy and Larry.
You can't do that.
By Mindy.
You ever seen a vice paid attention, or?
Yeah, I would. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I do want to just say something, and I'll try not to cry. This is not an easy thing. Because this is not just business, even though it is business. It's to be good stewards of the city's tax dollars, of our residents' money that's coming in. We want to do that. We want to be good stewards of that money. So we certainly don't want to be paying for a position that's no longer necessary. But it's not just business. It does affect a person and people because the work family is all affected by that. So let me just say that we have had that in our minds and in our hearts as we have struggled through this. Moving on in the agenda, possible approval of the Personnel Committee's recommendation. I think we already did that part. So we need to move on in regard to eliminating the events coordinator position. We have a bank account that's titled Perry Fest. Since we'll no longer have Perry Fest or other events that would be needing money from that account, we need to do something with that. It is not in the budget. It is not part of the general funds of the city. It's a separate account. It always has been a separate account. So we need to do something with it. Devon did check with the bank that it's in to find out what needed to be done. And basically, they just said, you can transfer the money out and then we'll close it for you. So I guess that's what we're looking to do.
Looking for the direction in which we want it.
But we need to know where to put it. It had, we've been kind of tossing that around with what should happen with it. And I think when Perry Fest was started, and I don't know, Steve, if you have any knowledge about that, because I don't really know when it was started. But it seems to me that any money that was profited from that was supposed to go toward parks.
Before my time, too.
Okay. So I don't know that for sure. Megan found a reference to it in the five-year plan, but it wasn't anything that was ordained by council or resolved by any council. It was almost an aside of parks, you know, money received, being received for that Perry Fest overage. So I think we just need to decide where to put it. My, my suggestion, and I'm absolutely open to whatever you guys decide to do with it, would be to put half of it in the Parks Fund and half of it in the McQueen House Fund. There's $10,000. Is that right, Devon? $10,000.
There's probably the savings that goes to it. So there's a little over $11,000.
$11,000.
A history on the Perry Fest was, the Perry Fest account, I do know, prior to my being hired, when they did the streetscape, they wanted the businesses to thrive. That's how Perry Fest began, which I believe was 2003 is when Perry Fest started. And they started this account and they created an event coordinator at that time. When I was hired in 2006, the account had $600 in it. And, and the goal of it was to continue with that festival. And I even asked the auditors to say, here, look, this is what we're spending. For some reason, the city is allowed to have that, to maintain that money, and it's all by itself. And so you're supposed to put in and take out. Judy sent me to a weekend of fun and seminar events weekend. And that was the idea for the parks that came out of it, is that their recommendation, whenever you are creating a function for the community, that if you have any proceeds that go over and beyond, you should have something to give, Cancer Society, whatever. I chose the parks, and I believe Dory reported when they were doing the five-year plan, because that was after me, that she continued on with that tradition that any over and beyond made off of Perry Fest would go into our parks, meaning it was for the community. But there's never, anything been in black and white, meaning resolution or anything like that. And yes, there has been some things contributed. Picnic tables, the steps that go up to the sledding hill. That was another project. Benses, anything else? Oh, tables upstairs were replaced with Perry Fest money. That's all I know of without getting it reviewed.
The fireworks that we were going to have at the Christmas Fantasy in 2021 that we had to cancel because of the wind, those were paid for out of Perry Fest money. So we have a credit for fireworks. They've already been paid for, for whenever we decide to do that. So we'll have to have something with fireworks. My birthday's in September.
It's been my understanding that we are going to continue Christmas Fantasy?
We did discuss that, yes, and would like to do that.
I would like some of that to go, go towards Christmas Fantasy.
I'm going to let Devon talk to you about that because I asked her about that myself.
And then I'm going to bring Megan in.
Come on up.
No, seriously. This is a subject, remember I told you that I might need your help if they bring this up? So what I explained to the mayor is, to keep money in that fund, you have to have a fund that has that checking account, which Parks and the McQueen, and the McQueen House already have. And so then I followed up to talk with Megan. Now, I don't know what rules apply, but she, she believes that you can earmark it in general fund and it'll be okay. Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, I need to do more research on it. But I do believe you can designate funds. Like, they don't have to all be surplus without a restricted purpose. You can restrict funds.
And they would go year to year, they would stay there?
Yeah, it would, it would just be, you know, if your general fund bucket is $200,000 and $5,000 of that was earmarked for future Christmas festivals, you could never use it for anything other than future Christmas festivals, is my understanding. I didn't get it clarified from the auditors, but I don't see why you could not do that.
Well, this money certainly isn't going anywhere. We could just leave it there for now and wait till Megan finds out for sure about that and have further discussion on it at our next meeting.
I would like to.
Okay. Okay, there's your assignment. We will move on then to our next agenda item, which is to have possible approval of wage for DPW maintenance position.
So Personnel Committee also has done research for pay rates for DPW personnel. And we request the council to approve increases of $18 to $22 per hour, depending on experience, for the upcoming DPW person that we need to hire. We felt that the previous position was paid a little bit too low. We could get more applications and more interest if it was increased.
I move that we approve the Personnel Committee's recommendation of starting wage for the DPW maintenance position to start at $18 per hour or up to $22 per hour, which will be determined based upon experience.
Second.
We have a motion by Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we do have two DPW open positions, is that right, John? Two positions that are open that people can apply for?
I just have one posted right now.
Okay. Have you had any applications at all?
Two during the posting period and one was an application resume several months ago.
Okay.
But at the time, there wasn't. So I have that in the folder.
Okay.
But so far, I don't know, it's been, some of it's been a week, maybe close to two. Just to.
So if anybody's interested, you can go to the city website or call City Hall and get more information. Is there any other business that may come before council at this time? Any others for public comment? Council, anything for discussion, any observations you'd like to point out? We have some agenda items for our next meeting. So Personnel will be looking into legal counsel's advice and bringing that to the next meeting. Megan will check into the earmarked funds and let us know about that at the next meeting. Anything else? Anything else? Anything else?
Council Rules and Procedure, inactivating account, legal counsel, is that what you said?
That's what I said. It is eight.
I think I did forget that.
Okay.
I think Personnel did wish for you to do that. I forgot to say that.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's right, we got it.
We need to do that.
Okay. Anything else? We're good? Eight thirteen, meeting adjourned.